Roger.
Roll call. Toth.
I'm here.
Obidorf.
Here.
Echol.
Here.
Marquette.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the June 12, 2023 regular council meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from June the 12th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the June 22, 2023 special council meeting? So moved.
I guess I'll. All those in favor of approving the minutes from June the 22nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the June 26, 2023 regular council meeting? Motion to add ordinance number 2023-45 to the agenda. And accept as amended.
Second. Vote on the motion to accept the agenda for June 26 as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Committee reports.
Recreation. Thank you, Mayor. Roswood Parks Recreation Committee for 61223. In attendance Toby Ladisma, myself, and Reynolds, Don Burks, Caroline Zokowski, Echol. Meeting called to order at 5:15 PM Eagle Point. There was discussion on Eagle Point property and what the board would like to see there if it were to become a park. Ms. Reynolds showed data from a previous poll that was done on Facebook and gave some information about the benefits of a dog park. The board would like to look at how other communities manage their dog parks to see if it would be a fit for the property. Vets Park Equipment. The board looked at some playground equipment that we are looking for to install at Vets Park. There is a deal on ZipTrak. As purchased by mid-July, there would be a $5,000 savings and could be installed in six to nine weeks. There was also a bigger piece of equipment on back order and would not be available for 24 weeks. Splash Pad Project. Mr. Ladisma met with Allison Murray and Game Time rep Kathy Kalenko to start the design for a splash pad behind the recreation center. 2024 levy discussion. The board has initial discussions on the upcoming levy proposal 2024. Ms. Echol said the council is still considering different funding options, but that funds would be allocated for the park. Mr. Ladisma would like to get the board's thoughts on capital projects moving forward. The board agreed that Eagle Point and Indian Hills property are at the top of the list. Upcoming programs. Little League Football 48 registered, Little League Cheerleaders 47 registered, Day Camp 20 registered. Capital Improvement Projects. The Concession Stand Rust Room Building Construction has started. The East project bids were collected and will be starting soon. Eagle Scout Project. Seth Crawford presented a project that he would like to do at Vets Park. He would like to repaint the Veterans Memorial Park metal sign at the top of the hill and add a bike rack to the park as well as to help beautification committee with their planning project at the memorial. He plans to have the project done by the end of June. The board agreed to let him proceed. Saw pictures from finished Eagle Scout project by Leela Smith, who put a pollinator garden in at Island View Park. The meeting adjourned at 5:50 PM.
Okay, any comments or questions on the rec report? Okay, Allison, what do you have this evening?
Really quickly, when you walked in, there should have been an ordinance, the one that we added to the agenda tonight at your seat. This is the agreement, the participatory agreement with ODOT in order to have the bridge replaced over I-75 on Lime City Road. So we'd like to enter into that sooner rather than later. So if council so desires, we would like to have that passed tonight. But that would be the only thing I would be requiring tonight as passed as an emergency. Briefly, just briefly, I wanted to address the street projects for this year. I know there's been a lot of questions, or I've heard a lot of people have a lot of questions concerning our street projects for this year. And they are still going forward. There's no problem with them. The issue is there's three parts to these projects, and anybody that came to the meetings that we had for the public, for the people that lived on those streets, heard this, but I think probably the other people probably haven't heard this yet. First of all, we need to move the utilities on both East Elm Tree and on Windsor Drive. So the utilities, that's Edison and Columbia Gas and AT&amp;T, they need to come in and move their utilities out of the way. So right now, we're waiting on that. That's not anything that the city can schedule. That's something that those utilities are in charge of. So they're going to come in and move them. We have good relationships with all the utilities, but they're going to come in and move those utilities. Once that's done, Northwest Water and Sewer is going to come in and replace water and sewer lines on both of those streets. So then finally, the last part of the project will be when the city comes in, rebuilds the roads, adds the curbs, the gutters, the sidewalks, the parking lane. So if anybody has any questions at all regarding the street projects, please call me here at City Hall and I'll be happy to answer them for you. But I just wanted to make that clear because I think some people have been confused or misunderstood.
Awesome. Caroline?
We're going to do storm sewers as part of our project.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? All right, just a couple things this evening. One, I want to thank everybody, the citizens of Rosford, the visitors of Convention Bureau, Team Rosford, the Rosford City Council, and all the citizens of Rosford for putting on an amazing event, which was our first ever music festival. So, thank you. We have some folks here tonight that are from the aphasia awareness group. Could you please come forward? This is a proclamation from the great city of Rosford, Ohio, where aphasia is a communication aphasia is a communication impairment caused by injury to the brain typically as a result of a stroke, but can also occur with other neurological disorders such as a brain tumor, traumatic brain injury, or progressive disease. And whereas many people with aphasia also present with weakness or paralyzation on the right side of the body to the damage to the left hemisphere of the brain. And whereas the effects of aphasia may include a loss or reduction in the ability to access language needed to speak, comprehend, or read and write while intelligence remains intact. And whereas the city of Rosford encourages residents to increase their awareness of this disorder and to advocate resources and provide support for individuals and their families who are living with this disease. Now therefore, I, Neil A. McKinnon III, Mayor of the great city of Rosford, Ohio, with all the citizens of Rosford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim June 2023 is Aphasia Awareness Month in the great city of Rosford, Ohio, and commend its observance to all citizens. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Neil.
We appreciate you. You and you're going to get the real one.
We did.
Okay.
I just want to say, this is Jackie Zahovich, and she was the co-founder of the Daisy Aphasia Group at UT. When she had her stroke 18 years ago, she was mute. She was told by one of the universities that she went to for speech therapy that to find a stroke group, a support group, there was none in Ohio. So she started one. And we have one at UT, and we meet Tuesdays and Thursdays, and there's one at BG that meets on Fridays. And we work with the speech-language students that are the graduate students. And we teach them and they teach us. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this.
Mr. Watts, was there any correspondence? Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-42 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-42 is an ordinance authorized in the city of Rosford to execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the State Route 795 resurfacing project and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
This is ODOT. This is an agreement with them, similar to the one for the bridge. This is where they're going to actually come through and resurface 795. I think they're going from I-75 all the way to Oregon Road. And we don't have to pay anything. We just need to give them permission to come through Rosford because that part of 795, part of it is in Rosford.
Mr. Obidorf?
Move to suspend the second and third reading of ordinance 2023-42.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions in regards to this or any concerns about us passing this this evening? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Want to declare ordinance 2023-42 an emergency measure?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-42. Obidorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-43 by title only?
So moved.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? 2023-43 is an ordinance awarding a contract for solid waste and recycling collection and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
There are ordinances for two options when it comes to trash and recycling collection. And the first one is for waste management. They gave us in 2020, they gave us an option. We had a three-year contract, but they gave us an option for years four and five. That actual bid is included in this packet. The second ordinance that you'll see tonight is one for Clum because we went back out for bid because our contract was over from 2020. In 2023, it'll be over August 31 of this year. We bid the service out once again. We did not get anything from anyone other than Clum, and so that bid is also included here in this packet. I think it's something that council should consider and probably think about when they pass it. If you have any questions, I think both of them are represented here tonight.
Do we want to do first reading with both and then?
I'd like to go first reading.
Okay. First reading. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-40, I'm sorry, 2023-44 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-44 is an ordinance awarding a contract for solid waste and recycling collection and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
Okay. Kevin, should we have Waste Management come up and talk first?
I think if it's going for a first reading, they already asked, and I think they'll be coming up under audience remarks.
Under audience remarks. And the same for Clum?
They want to, they can, yes.
Okay. Everybody's fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-45 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-45 is an ordinance authorizing the city of Rosford to execute a participatory agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of the bridge over I-75 on Lime City Road. ODOT project number 119007, WOIR7529.93, Bridge Rehab and Declaring An Emergency. This is the first reading.
I'd like to move to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance 2023-45.
Is there anyone in the audience has any questions in regards to this or a problem with us passing this this evening? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare 2023-45 an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-45.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Mr. Toth? Before they're kicking this off, do we know?
Allison, you know?
Jack, do we know when they're starting it?
I do not. I will get more information.
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha. Council remarks. Mr. Toth, we'll start with you.
I just wanted to thank the eight applicants for being in application in time, for the open spot. And November's not too far away, and I hope they're still interested in maybe filling in one of those spots or running for one. That's all I got.
Mr. Obidorf?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mrs. Echol?
I want to thank everyone who applied, and I want to thank everyone, everyone, everyone for the awesome music festival. It was a great time and just testament to how awesome our city employees are because it went off so well. Great community, can't wait for the next one.
Awesome. Mr. Marquette?
I wanted to ask either you or Allison, what's the progress with the Danny's noise, with the Burke Sholes and that whole neighborhood back there? Has that been resolved or are we making headway towards resolving that?
I know that the sound variance is only until 11 o'clock, so I think that that's headway to begin with. And I know that Todd Adet, and I'm sorry he's not here tonight, I know that he is looking into further options for that.
Okay.
A sound barrier.
Kevin, go ahead.
Just so you know, Todd did meet with an engineer out there, a sound engineer. They physically went out to the site. The sound engineer is drawing up plans that would, he had to monitor like how far away the sound was. And so he's drawing up plans for options to eliminate that sound issue. So hopefully, I have a note here to talk to Todd. I thought he was going to be here tonight too, but I'll talk to Todd tomorrow.
Mr. Obidorf?
Yeah, Kevin, who would assume the responsibility, the financial responsibility of something like that?
Unless council says otherwise, we're going to put it on the owner of the, I mean, it would be the owner's obligation unless you tell us differently.
No, I think that's appropriate.
Yep. That's been the assumption since the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Echol?
What's the status of the, and I apologize because I missed that meeting. Didn't Danny's provide us with a special event packet with several different dates for special events?
Yeah, the next one is the 29th. We approved two of them.
The council did not approve all of them. They just approved.
Just the first two.
Yeah, to test it out, to see how it works.
And both of those have come and gone.
Okay. So there hasn't been any action on the other special event requests?
Not that I'm aware of. He has not resurfaced.
They'd have to come back to us for that.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
And just so council's aware, I mean, when they submitted their initial request for the variance, it was during the winter months when nothing was going on. And our thought process was that we would grant the various to see how it worked out because nobody knew what type of bans he was going to have there or anything. And then obviously with the issues that arose, it got rolled back to 11 o'clock. And now we're looking at the sound barrier.
Well, I mean, is there, they've got the variance till 11 o'clock. Is there a variance on the level? I mean, is there a certain level that they have, that can exceed? Do we know that?
No.
Okay.
It's a.
A blank, an open?
No, it's a subjective, it's like a nuisance, a standard, but there's no decibel level like lawnmowers or anything like that.
Anything else, Mr. Marquette?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Heben?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Reynolds?
I just want to say that I greatly appreciate the people in this community, and I think we had a fantastic weekend. And I'm excited to see what else the city does moving forward.
All right, thank you. What I'll do now, we'll go to audience remarks, but I'll have Waste Management come and speak first and answer questions, followed by Clum, and then I'll go out to the audience. So Vince, you want to come on up and state your name and address for the record?
Vince Crawford. My address, 12340 Auburn Road in Chardon, but I obviously represent Waste Management here in Northwood. So thank you for having the opportunity to speak in front of you guys tonight. Obviously, I've been a longtime service provider for the city of Rosford and want to continue to do so going forward. As I stated, we have been, actually I'm going to say, we only have four employees currently working that reside in the city of Rosford, but you are our biggest customer. And you know, it's our duty to take care of you guys each and every week. And we want to continue to do so going forward. As I quickly reviewed the two different analysis from the numbers, I'm glad to see that we're still able to provide the city a $20,000 a year savings compared to the next bid on just the trash service. And I think our yard waste price was about $50 or $50 a year cheaper. And then both are prices very similar in recycling. But you know, as we continue to move forward with the automation and you know, the compressed natural gas trucks and moving to more sustainable type of environment, we are looking to try and do more with recycling in this area. So that will be continued effort that we will probably push forward into the future in the city of Rosford, hopefully to get more customers to do the recycling. But you know, first and foremost, we just appreciate the time that we've been your vendor and want to continue to do so, provide those savings and good service to not only administration and council, but the residents of Rosford as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Obidorf?
My understanding is that when bids were put out, you did not submit one.
That's correct.
Because of the two years from the previous one?
No, unfortunately, I just didn't know about it. You know, and past precedent has been the last several bids and all bids, and even with all my other communities, when we're the incumbent, we're usually notified and we know what's happening, you know, as far as the bid going back out.
You would have bid.
Yes, absolutely would have bid. The last two bids, those bids were emailed directly to me, so I knew they were out. But you know, that happens unfortunately.
I'm disappointed you didn't because I think you've done a tremendous job up to this point.
Well, again, our one, our two years that we have left is still significant savings versus even having a bid that, you know, with the escalation of prices over the last couple of years, it may have come in different, but we, you know, we committed to those numbers years ago, and we would stick to them going forward.
Mr. Marquette?
I've been happy with your service, but it seems that there's been a lack on your end of communicating with our people when we have issues where a street be missed or some complaints by citizens. Your people are not getting back to our people in a timely manner to rectify that.
I guess I'd have to say I'm sorry to hear that because you know, as I look back through my records, I've had communications back and forth, the administration, whether it's yourself or Ms. Shelton, on a monthly basis over the last six months. And we had a small billing issue. I know that there was some small missed pickups. Now, there was something operationally. I have our district manager TJ is here with me tonight. That I wasn't aware of. But I've always been very responsive myself, and obviously you've heard concerns. But I also say that I know when there was a major construction of the dead-end streets the last couple of years, we worked around our routes to take care of that. When we had a little mishap on what day all the extra pickups were going to happen or the extra items taken from Christmas, we doubled up and we did that two weeks in a row as opposed to the one that we initially committed to. So we're always willing to work through and improve things. And again, that's, I apologize, you know, to hear this for the first time. Because last time that I was in a council, just last year, you know, I know that we had a very good meeting and I had a lot of good responses from you. So again, I apologize to hear that.
Anyone else? Vince, you got anything more?
No, that's all.
All right, thank you so much for coming up. Clum, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Killian with Clum Brothers, 2918 Shetland Road, Toledo, Ohio. We were asked to submit a bid for the waste and yard waste and recycling pickup and submitted that a couple of weeks ago. We are newer in the industry for the waste pickup. We currently do about 10,000 stops a week, and we're a local company in Holland and looking to expand in the local area. We currently have about 25 employees in the waste side and have no fear of being able to take on your guys' stops and needs. We have a recycling program and a yard waste programs that we currently do today. And just here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Anyone have any questions? Caroline?
How does the yard waste program work?
Our yard waste program, we would bill it in the eight months that we are picking up, and they can put it out in brown paper bags or in the tote that is provided. And it is only billed during the eight months of the growing season when people are doing yard waste work and mowing their lawn.
Anyone, Mr. Heben?
Do you have a program for elderly folks that can't carry their tote out to their driveway from the side of their house?
Yes, if it's a handicap service that the city deems they are handicapped and need back in service, we would provide a pickup truck with a satellite truck that would back in and do a back in service for them.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that would be included in our.
Anyone else? Caroline?
Have you surveyed some of our alleys? I mean, I know we have some streets that are a challenge.
Yes, we've done laps through the, throughout the entire city. And anywhere that our larger trucks cannot fit, we have a satellite truck that will have a field supervisor that on the day of pickup, he will be out servicing those areas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Audience remarks. Here, come on up, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Siniac, Elm Street, Rosford, Ohio. We pay for a service for the yard waste, and I'm not complaining about it. But my complaint about, not the bill, but my complaint is a truck cannot come down our street to pick up the yard waste, so they dump it in the garbage truck. So to me, that's kind of a waste of money.
I have, I've encountered this before. Vince, can you come up? Because I was told that the yard waste trucks are the same trucks as the garbage trucks. Yeah, come on up and state your name and address, please.
TJ Hunt, Waste Management, 6525 Wales Road. I just wanted to answer.
Sure.
A question, if that's all right. So we have one designated truck that does the yard waste. So we have a garbage truck, we have a recycle truck, and then we have one designated ASL truck that handles yard waste.
It cannot come down our alley because of the wires, the wires that go across the alley. This gentleman came down our alley on Monday, and I happened to be in the alley dumping some stuff, and he says, oh, I'm here to get your yard waste. I said, honey, the garbage truck took it. It goes in the garbage truck.
May I ask, was he actually in a garbage truck or like in a pickup truck?
The garbage truck.
Okay.
And I don't mind paying for my yard waste.
No, that shouldn't happen because we have a yard waste truck that takes it to a different facility.
For years, they have always put it in the garbage truck.
Have you ever, before today, happened to mention it by chance?
I've even called your company when they haven't picked it up, and they send a garbage truck. Because the big truck cannot come down.
Well, the truck that would go down there isn't a normal truck that like lifts over the head like the rest. This would be a different truck that would not have to clear the wires.
It does not come down. You only get a garbage truck.
I just wanted to make sure I understood your question.
Can you give her your card and?
Absolutely.
And get this worked out?
There's $2,000, and they do the same thing on the other.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, motion, go ahead, sir.
I don't know if this answers.
No, 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 no. You got to come up and state your name and address for the record.
Jim Canary, 37 Santos. I'm actually here for my son's house on Elm Street, 200 Elm. We had to take a huge bush down and cut it up and put it next to his garage by the alleyway. Do you folks, or does the city do more than two separate pickups a year for that kind of waste, or no?
Normally don't. What was the reason for the removal of the bush?
It went into the fence, which also goes into his neighbor's yard, and then it was going into the roof of his garage.
If you'd like, if you or your son could get access to a pickup truck, you can bring it to our landfill. We'll open it up for you.
Okay. I don't have access to a pickup, but I didn't know if maybe someone else might know of, someone that can pick it up for a cost.
Tyler, can you give your contact information to this gentleman? And we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Hello?
I'm Tammy Burchall. I live at 113 Bergen Street. I spoke. Um, I spoke a month or so ago about the noise, um, coming from Danny's patio and in response to the, um, eight special events that they presented. I was assured that council only allowed two as a test. Um, and then, um, on June 15th, the Thursday night, they had a special event where they actually pulled a permit and it was approved by the city, um, where they had live music going...
Was this a third event or the second event?
It was the third event. They pulled another per- I don't know, I didn't...
I'll, I'll look into that.
You... This was going on till 11 o'clock. I had, the police couldn't do anything, so the neighborhood had to deal with this till 11 o'clock on a Thursday night. And then even after that, the band stopped and then it was just loud. I mean, they blocked their whole parking off and there was tables out there. You couldn't even watch your TV. You couldn't, I mean, it was, it was loud, um...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how it would get...
We can't, we can't do this.
Um, but I, it just keeps, I keep getting assured that, oh, just be patient. We're looking into a, I'll tell you right now, a sound barrier would have done nothing. I downloaded a decibel thing. I don't know about decibels, it was reading 89. You, Ohio law noise thing, what's supposed to be for, and I know the city can do whatever, you know, is 65. This was 89 in my bedroom, it was reading 75. But I guess I just don't, it's discouraging where, you know, you, like, how something can keep getting, like, approved and, like, as a resident, how I'm finding out on Facebook, but then I come here and, oh no, we only approved the two, but then a third. So then, even when I spoke about, when we were talking about, it was back in May, about the, um, the two that were approved was May 12th and May 21st. And then this was June 15th, uh, another one gets approved. And it's just like, yeah, I just kind of feel like nothing's being done and like, it doesn't... Neil, you know that I know about live music.
Sure.
It didn't have to be to that, they chose to be that loud. A band doesn't have to play that loud and you know, like, it's ridiculous.
I'll tell you what, why don't you and I and Ron and, and Brad, we'll get together, just the four of us and, and work it out.
But it's not, it's the neighborhood, it's the whole, like, the neighborhood hasn't changed, the bar changed. We haven't changed. There's kids, I mean, there were people peeing on their privacy fence. There's kids in the neighborhood.
No, I hear you.
The, I don't, I mean, I hear, like, but then it continues to get approved.
Allison, we approve a third event?
They told me when, and numerous...
Who's they?
Police. They couldn't do anything because there was a special permit. How would they block off city parking?
Todd, how does that work?
That, that, I don't know if that was included in the events that council approved...
No.
Last time. I think that one had already been approved prior to when you approved the other events. That, because they pulled a permit to block, to, to, to put the barricades up. You know, so they didn't have parking.
That was those...
I believe that one was approved prior to when you approved the other events.
By who?
Hold on. So, one more time, we didn't approve a third event?
There was, yeah, there was, there was an event approved for the blocking of the, the road. Not, not the one lane. They wanted to take the whole lane and you said, "No, you can, you can block off your front parking over."
Anyways, um, I'll get with Allison and Todd and Kevin tomorrow. I'm just a little bit confused and I, I, I understand, uh, your patients have been tested, but...
But like, we're being asked to be patient. How about the bar being asked to be patient and stop approving all these special events because...
I thought we only approved the, the parking...
The 12th and the 21st out of the eight that was presented at the May 8th meeting.
You'll hear from one of us tomorrow for sure. We'll get to the bottom.
If there's a...
Last comment.
If there's an issue with no top level decibel and it is 11:30 and it's too loud in their houses, there needs to be some kind of, um, something put in place so that the police don't feel like their hands are tied and they can't do anything. And that the, because I get the impression that they kind of, I mean, there's nothing we can do because it's been approved. We need to allow them to do something so that the noise can be turned back and under control because it's...
You're the legislative branch, so I would put that to a committee and, and come up with something.
I've tried with safety committee and I was told we can't put a decibel limit on it.
Kevin, is that accurate?
I, I don't know, I mean, it wasn't that we can't. I think that it's, it's more difficult from the police perspective. Look, a- at this point with the 11 o'clock, my guess is if the police get called out there at 11:05 and they feel that, that noise, there's gonna be, Chief Kessler, there'll, there'll be action taken.
11:01?
11:01. So, we, I, I don't, the, the, we did not grant a third variance. So I don't know where this came from. I, I remember coun- the council did allow him to use, remember, b- uh, block off the parking spaces.
My goal is for all the parties to coexist happily, so...
It just...
Let's just, let's get it, get it done and come up with something.
The sound, Todd Odette told me that the sound engineer felt strongly that this would solve the problem. Whatever this is, is what he or she is designing now, and I don't know what the cost is gonna be. So, if it comes down to a cost issue and the bar owners doesn't want, but we can't work out the financing, then again, it's, it's up to council whether to roll it back to the nine o'clock that's in the ordinance.
Mr. Overdorff, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just to reiterate what Councilwoman Apple said. We had a whole packet of items that they wanted to have special events for. I voted against it. I, my heart goes out to the people along that street. I think it's ridiculous, the sound over there, the noise. But we did not approve, council did not approve a third activity for that, for that, uh, bar. We did not. So I don't know where the special, uh, permit came from out of the sky somewhere, but we didn't approve it.
Well, we, I've got, I've got the packet here.
It was just parking, wasn't it?
And the 15th would have been the fourth one. Because one of them got rained out. One was moved inside, 63, I don't recall that one. 15th was the, the do- the doozy. And then the next one he had in this packet is July 29th.
All right, that's, we're getting together this week and come to... Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Linda Goblish, I'm 120 Bergen Street. Um, we've been there 20 some years and Danny's bar has turned our whole house into a nightmare. It's, there's garbage, there's cigarettes, there's drunks. And that big, um, outdoor thing they had, there was kids running around, kids inside Danny's, all over the place. The decibels, my husband has hearing aids, he could not, he wouldn't be able to hear the TV inside the house with full volume. We're right across there. And I put, I invite you to bring your grandkids over and put them to bed. All of you guys can come over to my house, the next concert, and hear it. It's, it's, it's terrible. It's not a residential. I'm tired of the garbage. I mean, I can lay in bed and I can hear them laugh outside, which is whatever. But that music that went on, I called the police, nobody could do anything. Nobody even wanted to talk to me really, and that's wrong. I mean, and if Danny's did not get an approval for this, is he gonna be held accountable? That's my question.
All right, we're gonna work on that this week.
And the sound barrier, I don't know if they can hide 89 decibels. That's like illegal, 89 decibels.
You didn't go to law school, you and I have known each other for a while. I could tell you stories about her.
All right, anyone else?
Is this open discussion, Neil?
What's that?
Come to the microphone.
No, it's audience remarks. But you can come... Hold on one second. Sir, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
I apologize for the mask, I have a newborn child who's unvaccinated at home. Uh, my name's Damian Stewart, I live at 415 Superior Street. Uh, I can attest to whoever said that about, I live three or four blocks away from Danny's. It was so bad, I could hear every lyric being said in my house. But, uh, I actually didn't come here for that today. I wanted to let you know that, while I congratulate you on the music festival, I, as I mentioned, I have a two-week-old newborn at home. And it was 90 decibels inside my house on Superior Street from that music festival. And with a newborn, that's, that can damage their hearing. And, uh, I just wanted to let you know that there are consequences to decisions you guys make. And I want you to, to let you know that there are people that get hurt from the decisions that you make. And, uh, I hope you'll think about those guys in the future. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Ms. Marsiniak?
Oh, I just have something for open discussion.
Actually, this is audience remarks, so if you'd like to bring something else up? One more time, state your name and address for the record.
Um, Barbara Siniac, 166 Elm, Rossford. The tree streets have a cat issue. Um, we're getting overrun. We have a lady that lives at, I don't know if I should say any addresses, 157 Elm, that I ca- we contacted the police on Father's Day to come out. The night before that, our alarm went off from 1 to 4 in the morning because of the cats coming into our yard. And we shoot them away with water and they just kept coming back. So we contacted the police and a young gentleman came out and he said that there was no law in Rossford of how many cats you can have. According to state law, you can have up to five cats and dogs. A combination or just five cats or five dogs. Um, so I brought this, if you wanna...
Yeah.
...to the, the council. And I know that in Rossford, we have a leash law. And these cats should not be running wild, especially when you have 13 and two pregnant. And I know that the police did talk to the lady after we called because my husband went down and asked her kindly not to release them at night so that they wouldn't keep setting our alarms off in our yard. And she told him basically, "No." So that's why we called the police. And the police officer was very nice, helped us out. And I don't want to have to keep calling the police and saying animal at large like he suggested. And I'm not against cats, I'm not against dogs, but keep them in your own yard. My yard is not your litter box. I have a beautiful yard, anyone who comes to our yard tells us that. I work hard in my yard to keep it that way. And when you're growing vegetables and stuff, cat urine and cat poop in your garden does not work. And it's not just me, it's multiple neighbors. We've had someone shoot a cat and, um, Kim Boucher's made a report. And they had to take their cat to a doctor where the bullet went in the femur and they had to put the cat down. We know, I know of other people in the neighborhood who are trapping them and killing them. And I also know of a person putting, um, antifreeze out to kill animals. And that is a terrible way to die. It just eats your whole inside out. It's not right. And we shouldn't have people going around getting rid of these cats the way we are because our officers don't know that you should not have that many and these being taken care of.
Kevin, is that a state law, that you can only have five dogs or cats?
I, I'm not familiar with it, but the, the problem that we've run into in the past, and we've had this situation periodically come up, yeah, is, um, to prove that she owns the cats, I mean, cats or the property owner, the cats aren't registered or anything like that, so... But what we have done, I talked with Allison Murray today, you apparently sent her a voicemail.
Yes.
Yes. So we're, we're in touch with our zoning inspector and it, it's, it's more of a nuisance. It's not a, a criminal case, it's, it's more of a nuisance.
I don't want it to be criminal, I just want it to be...
That's what the police, that's what the police do. But the zoning inspector will take care of it as a nuisance violation. And what we've done in the past is that, work with the property owner to either have her keep the cats in the house or council's adopted that program, I don't think we've done it...
Humane, Ohio.
Yeah, where humane, Ohio will, will take the cats.
Well, and I know that the county is involved now. And I know she got served. I don't know what all the paperwork is about because I wasn't involved in all that. But the problem also is if you walk down the street, you can smell it. It's absolutely nauseating.
And you're correct, they, the cats are like dogs. They're not supposed to run outside the property lines and they're, they're supposed to be on leashes.
Yes.
So, that's where...
And I have that in that packet that you guys adopted back in 2017. So, I did my research. But I, I just am hoping that our officers are aware of all this. And I know, he told me that she had to own up to owning the cats. And when he even went up to the house, three cats went up to him, just then, alone. And there was more in the rest of the neighborhood out.
Yeah, if the, if the owner doesn't do something, we'll abate the nuisance.
I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's really bad and I, you know, I don't want to grow vegetables with cat urine and cat poop in my yard.
I can't even look at a picture of a cat without sneezing, so I... I'm with you.
I'm not against cats, but...
I'm not against them either, I'm just a...
Keep them in your yard.
Anyways, thank you so much, we're honored. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hold on a second.